Hey there Improv Tips, I'm Paul Valencourt here, back with another improv tip. In fact, today I'm bringing you the 4th of my 6-part series about set games for the Herald. This has been an absolute joy to make. Not only have I gotten to get some great feedback from you guys, it's really fun to sort of give you this information in a way that the Improv Tips haven't usually been so instructive, but it's great to be able to share these games in this way. The other thing is that I usually make these improv tips just sort of all alone in my office at crazy hours of the day and night, and now I got to really get out there and mix it up with some players and give notes and see some improv happening. It's just, it's really great. It's what I really love about improv is that sort of community feeling, that sort of like once in a lifetime, here's this special moment that we're all sharing together, and it was great to sort of be a part of that for these videos. So, today's video, what's it about? It's about one of my favorite games, of course, otherwise we would not have included it in this series. It's called Town Hall Meeting. What I love about Town Hall Meeting is it is very similar and very close to, in a lot of ways, last week's game, which was Everybody Get In Here. But in this one, we're adding this really exciting element of breaking the fourth wall and going into the audience, right? This is really fun. This is what I think improv is really, is fun, is it adapts, it evolves, and it changes, and it challenges the conventional structures of theater, right? And so this is what we're doing, we're going into the audience, we're breaking the fourth wall, I think that's a super fun element of it. Another super fun element of it is that we are, it has so many skills like all of these games do, that's why I included them, and it has so many skills that we can use not only in this game per se, but also we can hybridize them into other sort of scenic elements, other games, or maybe parts of the Herald. Let's say someone is giving a graduation speech, right? Well, people can stream into the audience and be other people attending that speech, and they start asking questions maybe, or sort of opens up, and sort of now that scene has evolved into something else. One of the things I love about breaking the fourth wall and really sort of being in and amongst the audience is that it takes the show from being like a presentational experience to being an immersive experience. Now we're in it as an audience member. I'm sitting next to a player, maybe they draw me into it, right? And now I'm in it with them. Now, it is all, we're all sort of mixed up in it together. Where does the show end? Where does life begin? That's a really fun element of the game. So, I don't want to say too much more about it, I've said plenty in the video coming up. I think that's it. Here we go. Sit back, relax, and enjoy. Town Hall Meeting. Hey everybody, I'm Paul Valencourt, welcome back to Improv Tips. Today I am presenting the 4th in my 6-part series of Set Games for the Herald. If you check out this ding ding playlist here, you'll see all the ones that have come before. And today we're presenting the 4th one, which is Town Hall Meeting, one of my favorite games. Last week we did, in this video, ding ding, a game called Everybody Get In Here. Now this is kind of like Everybody Get In Here, but it adds the dimension of breaking the fourth wall and going into the audience. Let's talk about how it goes. Like all these games, it starts off with a clear call. In Town Hall Meeting, I'm gonna, well, let's backtrack for a second. In Everybody Get In Here, I am calling from here, from the point of the flying V, you'll see in that video if you go check it out, right? And for a lot of our other games, I'm down here in the narration spot, right? But for this one, for Town Hall Meeting, I'm coming straight down, and I'm talking to the audience directly, and a lot of times I'll have a podium here waiting for me. Alright, people of Elgin City, today we have a debate before us, and we want to hear points for and against. And so now, I'm saying it's a debate before us, and for and against, and so, once I start this, right? Okay, townspeople of Elgin City, calm down, calm down, quiet down. What's gonna happen is, as I'm doing that, the players on the side know that it's a Town Hall Meeting, and they're gonna stream into the audience and take some seats in and amongst the audience there, right? So now they're, so now we're sort of like playing this three-dimensional space, where they're in the audience, and there's some action on stage, and some action in the audience. So, I'll set it up. Townspeople of Elgin City, please, everyone relax, calm down, calm down, we're about to start. And then I'm gonna set up as views for and against, pro and con, on whatever the issue of the day is, right? So let's say it's skateboards, right? Skateboarding. Alright, people, we have a resolution before us, for and against, should we allow skateboarding in our fair town of Elgin City? Let's hear some opinions for and against. So at that point, I've set up, for and against skateboarding. We are not, like Everybody Get In Here, brainstorming. It's not a brainstorming thing. It's for and against, people who like skateboarding, people who don't like skateboarding, okay? So they're just streaming to the audience, sort of how they are now, and what's gonna happen is, one by one, they'll stand up, right? And they'll address the crowd, the audience, and the rest of the townspeople of Elgin City, and they'll say generally, their name, kind of who they are in town, and what their opinion is, right? So if I'm here, I might stand up and say, alright, my name's Frank, you all know me, I'm the woodworker in town, I got the woodshop out on the edge of town. I love skateboarders, because they are really hard on skateboard decks. They break them, they break them, they're doing grinds and ollies and mick twists, I don't know what they're doing. All I know is a lot of business coming in, and if you outlaw skateboard, you might as well shut down my factory, alright? You might as well shut down. Yay skateboarders, go skaters! Right? And they'll all sit back down, okay? Now, the trick is, where people get sort of drawn in sometimes, is they buy into the reality of the thing too much, and I end up saying all my things up to the mayor, right? It's not really a town meeting. It's not really a town meeting. It's just, it's the simulacra of a town meeting. So, once I get okay from the mayor, then I'm gonna turn on and plead my case to the rest of the citizens, including the audience members, right? This is my time, if you have, like, this is a time to just show characters. We don't focus a ton on characters really so much in these set games, this is right all about character. I'm gonna get up, I'm gonna say my name, kind of who I am in this town or whatever, and then for and against, right? And then I sit back down. Now, just like in Everybody Get In Here, right? Last week we were talking about this, about what does that mean about that person, what does that mean about that person, right? Check that out in the video. Same thing here. As we're sort of filming these, and we know I'm Frank and own the woodshop, then maybe someone else will stand up and say, well, you know what Frank? I, uh, my name's Tom, and I own the local first aid supplier, and you know, I love it that skateboarders get injured all the time, but it's dangerous. They're getting hurt all the time. Now, you're making tons of money out of these skateboarders, and so am I, but I don't think it's right. I think this is blood money. Literally, in this case, blood money, right? So, I'm against skateboard, 100% against, right? And so maybe you applaud, applaud it then, each one person sits back down, so and so, right? So we're still building these relationships, and we're stacking these things, one on top of others, just like we did in Everybody Get In Here. So I may have a relationship with someone else in the town, and I know them, right? Or I may know something about their backstory, or I may agree with them or disagree with them, right? So we don't want to be like, single thing, single thing. All these single things exist in the context of the town. Does that make sense? Right? So we're just gonna go through, bing, bing, bing. Now, there's, we have eight players today, we'll have seven because one will be the mayor. So maybe all seven of them talk, maybe all seven of them don't talk, right? As the person who is the mayor, or who's leading the meeting, right? My job again is time and traffic control, right? So if it sort of breaks out, it's like, okay, alright, everyone calm down, calm down, there's a couple more people we need to hear from, and then I'll see who wants to, right? A lot of times in the audience will raise our hand, right? And also, okay, I know you have something to say, so I'll call on you, whatever, right? Now, my, one sort of technical issue for me is, I don't want to call on someone by name, right? I want to say, okay, what do you have to say, right? I'm just gonna throw it to them, and then they're gonna stand up and say their character, right? Because if I say, Tom, what do you want to say? And he's like, oh, I'm actually Marjorie, or whatever. He's got something he wants to say, I just want to facilitate him saying it, whatever that is. If I say Tom, or whatever, I'm shutting it down and having one mind working on the problem. If I just direct traffic to him, all of our brains will work on the problem, because he gets to say what he's thought of, right? That makes sense, right? Again, so opening it up, but at the same time, opening him up, right? Making way for him, facilitating his thing. Bing, 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 bing. Sometimes the audience, maybe I sit next to an audience member, I'm like, oh, this is my wife Sharon, and I'll have an audience member with me, or whatever, right?[519.12] We sort of play, there's all these different layers that we can add to it. But the basic thing is, a clear call. Alright townspeople, settle down, settle down. As that's happening, as I'm saying settle down, that's when they're streaming into the audience, right? We're covering the transitions. Then I'll say, okay, here's the issue, for and against skateboarding in our town, whatever it might be. Then, facilitate, facilitate, right? Maybe sort of calling back. And then I'd say, well, I'm trying to keep track of like how quick it's going, how's it going? And maybe there's a big laugh, or maybe that, that's definitely the final one. Okay, okay, now let's call it for a vote. Alright, all of those, by applause, this is super important to me personally, because I think this is the way it works, is by applause, how many people are for skateboarding in our town? Well, here's some applause. By applause, how many people are against? And then that second, as that second applause is going, everyone is streaming back on stage. And so that applause is covering all this sort of, all that noise, right? Otherwise it's super loud and super awkward. So I'll say, alright, final vote, all of those against, let's hear a round of applause. So we'll applause, and the audience joins in with applause, we cover some transition, everyone's up here. And then all I have to do, once everyone's back on stage is, okay, sounds like that's passed, we're gonna have no skateboarding any longer in Elgin City. Alright, come back next week, we're gonna be talking about XYZ, whatever that thing might be, okay? Or please join us at the back for some coffee and donuts brought in by Marjorie. Thank you, Marjorie. Whatever that thing might be, right? Just some sort of wrap up and then shoot, shoot to the next scene, okay? Pretty simple, right? Again, call, setups, remember to address the entire crowd, that's super important. And then, relationships, relationships, don't be afraid to address or talk about someone else who's already talked, okay? Alright, that's the setup of Town Hall Meeting. Let's get the players on stage and have a try. I will give the players a suggestion to start them off. The suggestion is, the suggestion is hardware. Here we go, hardware.
Alright everybody, settle down, settle down, welcome. Okay, take your seats, take your seats. Charlottesville, we're under attack, or I should say, we're here, because we don't know if we should make things out of metal anymore. So we're gonna go ahead and throw it to the floor whether we're for or against metal projects, alright? Yes, sir.
Yeah, you folks know me, I'm Vern Scheffel down the local butcher shop. And obviously metal's really important to me for what I'm doing when I'm cutting up the meat to the animals. So I'm just gonna say that we need to keep the metals in our community, that's my opinion, okay? Thank you.
The floor yields, go ahead.
You all know me, Beatrice, I own the local apothecary in town. And I think metals in our systems really ruin ourselves, they ruin all of our structure as people and degrade our humanity in short.
Thank you, Beatrice. Thank you. It was nice to open up your aura, yes, go ahead.
Yes, yes, hi, it's me, Robert Williamson. I, I own the local plastics factory, as you all know. Plastics, it's the future. Realistically, we don't need metal anymore. It's, it's unnecessary, it's outdated, it's an old process. And if we all just embraced plastics, everyone would be much happier, especially me.
Give them another round of applause. Thank you for the donation. Uh, yes, yes, yes.
Hi everyone, my name is Mary Jo Smith and I own the button up or shut up button shop. And I agree with you, plastics are great, plastic buttons are so good. Metal is not good, metal can cut you and hurt you and we don't want to use that. And I just wanted to say that Carl told me that there were supposed to be chocolate chip cookies and they're only oatmeal.
No personal attacks, no personal attacks, alright? Let's calm down the personal attacks. You, you've had your hand raised a little bit.
Yes, I won't either. Y'all know me, I'm the local puberty and sex education coach for the parents in the area, guiding their youngsters through that tough transition in life. And I think we need metal. It's hardcore, as long as that.
Thank you. By the way, thank you for guiding our children through puberty, Coach. We appreciate you. Yes, you in the back.
Yeah, well, you all know me, my name is Harry Humperdink and I'm the decorator, war betting in this town. And I gotta tell you, if it weren't for metal, thank you, you said a second word. If it weren't for metal...
Let's all stand up for his service.
That's right. If it weren't for metal, I would not be standing here before you as you see me. I got metal in my foot, metal in my leg, and god damn it, metal in my head. So I am definitely for metal. Hi Coach.
Can I please, yeah? Alright, I just, I just, I just want you to know, if you had plastic, plastic, it would be, it would be more durable, it would hold you up better, it's lighter. I just, I want you to think about plastic. I can, I can give you plastic products.
Alright, alright, let's all calm down, let's all, one more, one more.
I didn't want to bring this up here, but I think we all need to know that Beatrice's apothecary, she's actually selling the funny weed out of there, so she's really...
Hey, no personal attacks, just saying, no personal attacks. Alright, alright.
I'm also for the weed, that's my passion.
Rattle, 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 alright, alright. Let's just take a vote, let's just take a vote and settle this once and for all, Charlottesville, how about that? All for metal, please have a round of applause. All against, please applause. It sounds like we have a tie, so we will make half our products with plastic and half our products with metal. Join us next week, Charlottesville mayors, as we discuss whether or not we should surf. Have a good one.
Charlotte's America.
Charlotte's America.
Very nice guys, very nice, very fun. How do you guys feel playing it?
It's fine, man.
So if we're gonna, who's it, shall we, so if there's only one person left, did you have something?
Huh?
You had something to say, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so if there's, if we're gonna do almost everyone, let's do that last one. Yeah, it's, it's just a judgment call, right? I think we do like three or we do a lot, kind of, you know? But I thought really great, nice, I thought really, what I really loved about it was, once we got the initial things out, then we started playing relationships, right? So the game goes from just the game to now a group scene, which is kind of what we like, right? We sort of start with this real strong foundation of the set game and then we open it up. But we've got that thing that's grounded us, right? I thought that was really fun. And we have relationships with each other. A couple times I was like this, I was in the audience or cooking inside this. So the thing to keep in mind is, as I stand up, especially if you're sort of mid-audience, right? Where, where you were. So I'm sort of mid-audience, right? I still need to, although most of the people are down here, I still want to keep pleading it out to anybody who will listen, right? I'm sort of like oscillating back and forth, hey everybody, here's my, so I really want to share with the whole crowd, right? And I think you did a good job of that, but I just was like, you saw me like, yes, it's a good one, right? But anyway, it makes a big difference that it truly shares it out, especially in a big house, a lot of people. I thought that was really great, I thought the vote at the end was nice, everyone sort of came up. I would say at the, at the vote at the end, come up on stage and then just adjourn to the wings, because then naturally the end of the game is that final vote and that's just transition and following action and then Chell does his like, his little sort of wrap up at the end. And then we're clear to go to the next scene. If everyone's still on stage, then we have a second ending, a second transition, you see what I'm saying? From onstage to offstage. So when we come up, we're just adjourned to the wings, getting ready for that next scene. As he finishes his wrap up, whoosh, into the next scene, right? Super simple, that's the whole game, it's really simple. It's closely related to Everybody Get In Here, has a couple different dynamics, but that's it, let's do one more. There you go, man, that's the game, that's as simple as that. I mean, everything else from here is practice. They pretty much got a handle on it, they pretty much sort of know what it's all about. Most of my notes are staging notes, you know? One of the biggest things, one of the hardest things for people doing this game is to get, to break the habit of just talking to the mayor or whatever, or the person who recognizes them from the stage, right? Because that is a human thing, that I talk to the person who's talking to me, right? But once you're recognized or sort of say, okay, you talk now, once you're in the audience and you're that person, it's, it's you have the conscience, you're sort of speaking, you need to remember that as a player, you need to share with the whole audience, people in front of you, people behind you, people are gonna be looking like maybe they're, or maybe they're looking behind like this, they're sort of all taking it in, right? It is that immersive experience now. It's not just proscenium, now it's like theater in the round. You're in the middle of this thing, you're in the theater, right? You're sort of all around. So it's all around you, happening all around you. So you just really need to remember to share that. And that's the hardest thing honestly for people to do. I think that Chell does a really great job of a super strong call, really nailing down, here's what it is, for and against metal, well, I mean, it's such a random thing. But once that's out there and it's super clear, then everyone's sort of like, I really believe that the creativity comes from sort of like narrowing down a little bit, right? I think one of the hardest things is, is especially in improv, is when someone says, okay, just do a scene about anything, right? Once you get a suggestion, that's sort of a chameleon, gadrillion things that it could be, narrows down. Oh, metal, okay, so now I'm narrowing down on that and what does metal mean to me, right? We see a bunch of different interpretations or sort of takes on what metal means, right? I think that's really interesting. So, so that nice, strong call helps the caller, helps the players, it's super, super important and Chell does a really great job of it. The other thing I really love about this version of it, or what they start to do here, and I sort of mentioned in the notes, is that it, the game grows, as it's going, the game grows and it sort of transcends the rules or the structure of the game, which is like trick, turn-taking, your turn to talk, your turn to talk, your turn to talk. And now it becomes a group scene and that's really what we love. That's really what we want it to be, is that we sort of have this scaffolding or this structure that's supporting us and lifting us up, lifting us up, and then we sort of transcend that scaffolding and now we're into a bigger realm. It's a group scene, right? That's what we're trying to learn, is those scenic dynamics, right? And we can take that to other games, we can make up our own game, we can use that in scenes that happen to be group scenes. All of these things are skills that we're learning from this very simple game of Town Hall Meeting, okay? Let's see another one. Fantastic, well we heard some notes, now we're gonna have another try at it in a second. But I just want to say, what I love about this game is that it can be so many other things, right? It can obviously be a Town Hall Meeting, that's fantastic, but what if it's, okay, listen up Walmart employees, right? So now it's a bunch of Walmart employees. Or, okay seniors, listen up seniors, we're for and against pudding, whatever that thing might be, but now we're a bunch of seniors, right? So I'm putting a big frame around it when I, when I introduce the game, but it's all the same dynamics, but now it's Walmart employees or seniors or, okay, cross-country biker association, great, or, or, you know, motorcycle gang, whatever, it could be whatever, but I'm putting that big frame, but all the dynamics are the same, all the dynamics are the same in the game. But that's what I love about it, is there's so many different ways to apply this skeleton of a game, okay? So with that in mind, I will give a suggestion and you guys can play whatever version of Town Hall, whatever version you want to play, using what we've learned. The suggestion for the second round is going to be, is going to be finances, finances. Here we go.
Alright, welcome H&R Block shareholders, please settle down, take your seats, find yourself a nice spot, I hope you got some coffee. Great, great. Alright, so we wanted to address today a concern that everyone's been having, whether or not people should be allowed to keep their money at all. Some people feel that it should all come to us, some people feel that we should leave them with money. So that's really the question is, should we take all of the money from our customers? Alright, let's open this up to questions, you, you please.
Hi, I'm Bill, Bill Huckleberry. I am for taking all of their money because then my lifestyle would take a dramatic turn for the worse and I can't have that. I love going out on my vacations every month, so I'm for taking their money.
Alright, alright, thank you, Bill, alright. Yes, you right there.
Yeah, this is Pat Mellon, I'm also a power-time massage therapist and I really think that we should just give away all their money because I really think that having worldly possessions just is really a drain on the soul, so that's just my, my take on it.
Alright, that was informative, yes, yes, you, yes.
Uh, yes, my name is Rainbow and, um, thank you all, thank you, thank you. I like that. I just think everybody should have money and, you know, if you have it, just give it, you know what I'm saying? I mean, numbers are just numbers, who cares? You know, I mean, life is too, like, you know, you just kind of need to take a little acid every now and then, you do need money for that.
Okay, I think we'll be moving along right now, yes, yes, you, you had your hand.
Yeah, my name's Dastardly Dave, I think we should take all the money! We should take all their money, wrap it up in some rope and put it on some train tracks, what do you say? Yeah! Yeah!
Good to see you again, Dastardly, yes, yes, you, you right there.
Yes, it is Charlene Von Ruthstein and I believe we should take all the money because if they don't realize we're gonna take all their money, they didn't deserve to have it in the first place.
My name is Roberta Wabash and I did not save properly in my whole life and my life insurance at this company is quite awful, to be frank. So I think we should keep all of the money to make up for our woes and foes and follies and mistaken marriages in life.
Yeah, um, so, hi, my name is Shane, Shane, Shorty, Shorty Shane. I just want to tell you all that, you know, I grew up with no money, so I really don't see what the big deal is right here.
Kiss. Kiss. Kiss.
You kiss.
Alright, let's, let's bring it down a little bit, let's, let's, Shorty Shane, was that it, Shorty Shane? You had anything you need to say? Alright, alright, I, I think that's all of our viewpoints here, oh, okay.
You know, I'm just gonna say one more thing.
Kiss.
You know, stop kissing, you are not a snake and you guys are all greedy.
Boo.
Yes.
I raised multiple children.
Multiple with multiple eyes.
On that point, I think we can have our votes, okay? Now let's, let's make this clear. So all those in favor of taking all of our clients' money, clap. Alright. And all of those opposed to taking all of our clients' money, give them a round of applause. Alright, well, I think it's very clear where this is going. We are now officially taking every penny from our clients. Alright, thank you very much. Next week, free cocaine for everyone. Have a good one.
Nice tax preparation policy of free cocaine. Great, I thought, I thought it was super fun, I thought it was super fun. I think the one thing I'd say is just like, just pace it up a little bit, just quicker from person to person and say your thing, like energize your thing and say it and then ta-ka, right? Boom, just a little bit of energy, a little bit of pace, I'm always in favor of that. I like, I like the setup of it, we're all, you know, H&R Block and we're sort of all, again, for and against. I think if we can set up like for and against taking all of our clients' money, who's favorite for that, who's against that, right? And then, the last thing was, oh, just make sure, when you're in the audience, Rainbow especially, make sure that you're sort of oscillating to the whole crowd, right? It's, it's the most unnatural thing, so I don't want to talk to the person who's talking to me, right? But I really want to share with the whole crowd, even if there's only one person back there, I want to include them in the thing, right? I love, I love the stacking and the relationships, I thought that was all really fun. Oh, and the last thing for the person who's calling the game, right? At the end, it seems like the balance of the audience is for taking the money from everybody. So I try to put the vote that I think is gonna get the most applause second, because it's just a little bit more cushion, right? And also I want to end with a bigger applause than a smaller applause. It's a tiny thing, but it's just like a little, a little tweak that sells the game a tiny bit more. Super fun, that's really all the notes I have, I think it's a really fun game, especially if you're on a team that likes characters or wants to work on characters, this is a super fun, structured, supportive environment for characters, because you just have a couple lines, a few lines to get out your character, kind of what your point of view is and, and there's not a lot of, not a ton of heavy lifting, not a lot of risk to it, that's a great way to build into that. I'll say also for Town Hall Meeting and for Everybody Get In Here from last week, this is a really great game where we can even see characters from the Herald pop up in here, right? Maybe someone is struggling with finances there and they end up in this meeting somehow. That's really fun too, right? Because then it really stitches the Herald together as one unified thing, not separate pockets of worlds, but one big unified world. That'd be really fun to see. I think that's it, any questions from you guys? Any questions from you guys? Excellent. So that's Town Hall Meeting, thank you for watching, join us next week for another video. Great, another really great, really fun take on the game, not a ton of notes again, the one staging note I'll come back to again is, hey man, you gotta share with the audience,